All right. All right, we are right at our start time here, so I'm gonna call to order the town of Elon Board of Alderman regular meeting. So we are gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I guess I will lead us today.
Special guest.
Special guest, the mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hey. I will ask the town clerk to read the items on the consent agenda, please.
Number A, Board of Aldermen's January 11th, 2022 Meeting Minutes. Letter B, Performance of Rich Rodner as Finance Officer. C, Requirement and Sale of K-9.
Thank you, Diane. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Moved.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That would unanimously. That happened unanimously. Comments, this is an opportunity for residents and visitors to share their comments about anything that they'd like to see in the town, any feedback that they have, so we will open up the public comment section. Diane, is there anyone online? That isn't staff. Okay, we will close the public comment section. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, Land Development Ordinance Tax Amendment Number 22-02 regarding the decriminalization of ordinances. Diane, I believe that too.
Yes, quickly, last week, we held a public hearing on this item. These are all passed down to us from the General Assembly. There are basically three amendments to our land development ordinance that you're making a decision on tonight, and then we will come back to you with a more comprehensive set of amendments to our code of ordinances that involves, to some degree, planning, but also the Department. Tonight, you'll be asked to take a vote on adoption of the amendment, and secondly, the consistency statement, which I've read last week and I'm happy to read again if anyone needs that reminder. And just as a clarification to one of the questions last week, the only item that specifically remains in the LDO that states Mr. Mayor George is giving false testimony after being sworn in in a quasi judicial hearing. And we're working with the town attorney to determine how to address that, so that may come back to you as well, but what you have before you tonight still stands.
Questions for Pam? Do we have to vote on these two items separately, or can we have a motion for both together?
I think I would like to see it done separately, and we have done it that way in the past, just to be clear.
Okay, well, let's start with the tax amendment. So do we have a motion to approve the tax amendment?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Motion passes unanimously, moving on the consistency statement. Do I have a motion to approve the consistency statement?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
New business, consider the Juneteenth holiday.
Talked about this last week, whether the board wanted to add this to the package for town employees with the honor of Juneteenth. The emancipation was recognized in Texas at the end of the Civil War. Past year was declared a national holiday or federal holiday. In fact, you had some information from other communities near us. Gibsonville recognizes it. Either Alamance or Guilford Counties recognize it. Talked to a gentleman in the governor's office, state does not recognize it, didn't sound like they have any plans to equate it with along the lines of President's Day, which is a federal holiday, and the state of North Carolina doesn't recognize. Question had come up as far as what the cost would be, and as I indicated last week, cost is the difficult thing to measure when for people getting paid for it regardless, either you're working, you're paid, or you're not here and get paid. It's more an opportunity cost, if you will, from economic terms of the work that's not happening. What we tried to do is take our biweekly payroll, I took three separate payrolls, so six weeks, and that ranges within about $20,000 one week versus another, or one paper versus another, simply divided by 14, come with the daily cost. And then roughly, I'm gonna say about $10,500 is the cost of one day of labor for the town of Elon. So some people would still be working anyway, they get time. That would be a rough calculation as to what the financial commitment would be.
So just to consider that, just a couple of questions that didn't really come to my mind last week. In terms of employment, do we pay most of the staff on an hourly basis or a salary basis?
Interesting question. As a general rule, I am gonna say that department heads are all salaried, non-department heads are paid hourly. From a mechanical standpoint, our software, we have to figure out when somebody earns hourly, translate that to an annual basis, put that into the software, which calculates how much they get each hour. So department heads are paid on a salary basis, non-department heads, they show up as a salary or paid hourly.
And so from, you know, just thinking about salary basis, would you say that most of the salaried employees only work 40 hours a week?
Um, no, I would not say that.
They work more.
I would venture to say that most of them, very few of them check in at eight and check out at five on an everyday basis.
And if we paid them for additional time, do you think it would be more than the cost of $10,500?
Over the course of the year, I suspect, yeah.
I just thought that that was worth us asking when we're talking about the cost of labor and what we're already getting from staff based off of that, as we're looking at, you know, the cost of everything. Any questions? I think this might be one that we shouldn't just take a vote on, but maybe have a discussion about before we vote.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I think I recall it was the last year we had Veterans Day. It moved as I guess from 11 to 12 holidays. We did that really in keeping with what the county's doing. As well as the federal government. And as you mentioned, the state doesn't recognize President's Day. Right?
Correct.
And neither do we, which is always kind of odd, I thought. That would have been one the state would have recognized. So if the state doesn't recognize Juneteenth, in which you think that's probably gonna be the case, we'll be not really following what the state's done typically for its holidays, right? So we'll be closer, one more day than what the state's done.
Yeah. Let me get into the item on one to check the, yes, we are different than the state is, yes. From a comparison standpoint, the state did recognize Veterans Day, we did not. Previously, we were out of step with them on that. State recognizes 12 days, the federal government recognizes 11. So, you know, it's, yeah, we would be different than the state. We would be the same as some local towns, different than the county. The Works Association just came up on their listserv, and they had done a survey. I think they had about 28 respondents, towns all over the state. And there were, it was split 50/50, 14 had adopted Juneteenth, 14 adopted Juneteenth, 14 had not adopted it, so.
I think the important thing I'm hearing is is that some groups haven't adopted it. I kind of hear the word yet in there, because it's so early and so new. And I'm just wondering, as of right now, the state has decided not to do that, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they won't in the future. And I would like to, I just feel like it's important to make a statement, so I'll just, it's not like there's a huge budgetary impact for us.
Again, that's where I was going with the cost aspect of it. I don't believe it will change our budget. It will, there would be one day less of work being done.
Right.
You know, that's the, that's the, that's the pocket cost, if you will, it's not being out of pocket of money, it's being out of pocket of work. So in that sense, you know, there is no budgetary impact, although there is a productivity impact, I guess.
You know anything about, we've been having a great discussion about government recognition of this, but are banks recognizing it, is the university recognizing it for their employees on that day? You know, these are questions I don't know if we have an answer to as well, so.
I don't know about the university, the fact that it's a federal holiday.
Do you know anything about it?
We have not given one, we're not taking the closing or taking that day, we have personal, a personal day that folks can take to celebrate.
That's what we've done too, of course, I think the technically banks typically go with the federal holidays. Being, we're not a bank, but we, I think I mentioned our last meeting, that what we've done there is to give a floating holiday that people can take, you know, anytime they want to do that, which would in fact give us the same, give us 13 days either way, so. And I guess that's where I raised that question, is that what would employees prefer? Have a floating day, where they could choose to use that day as the university does, or to take another day like Indigenous Day or President's Day off instead of Juneteenth? Would that be something that would be more preferential to the majority? Because obviously, we want to make sure our benefit package is competitive. We also know we can't get 20 days off. Can't run our town that way. So that's why I posed that question last, last week, you know, what would be the advantages of doing a floating day? To give people the option to recognize that day if they chose to, as opposed to not being able to do that.
I guess the advantage would be that offices would not end up closing that extra day during the year. We would still have the same cumulative effect of time off, but it wouldn't all be at one time. And as far as whether employees would prefer that or not, I don't know.
When I think about kinds of work that's being done in the town, you've got office staff, you've got people who are here in the office, and then you've got central staff that are gonna have to work no matter what, whether there's a holiday or not. You've got some situations where a floating holiday may or may not impact, you know, if there's several people that want to take their holiday off. But what it means to me is is that it expresses that on Monday, June 20th this year, is a day that is seen by the town of Elon as a day of business as usual. And as a a benefit to the employees, I mean, I guess maybe a floating holiday sometimes works a little bit better. I think President's Day's gone, I think President's Day was taken off very regularly before, it kind of became a floating holiday after many, many years. But it is a new holiday, I guess I would say, once again, I expressed this opinion last, last week, is that if the office is open, it just says if it's something that we want to say, no, it's a special, it's an important day. And I think we need to
I guess, and I appreciate what you shared. If we made this a floating holiday, next year, two years down the road, state makes Juneteenth a holiday, recognize it. We would certainly inspire the state to still holidays. We have the ability to rescind that floating holiday in that case, if we replaced a floating holiday with a June. You don't take it away. That's pretty much the rule of government.
The board sets the benefit package, and the board can change the benefit package, so if you decide tonight to make it make it a floating holiday, in two years, you can make it a permanent holiday. If you made it a permanent holiday today, in two years, you could change it, make it a floating holiday if you chose to. I mean, that's the ability you have with our benefit package.
The range of this year, of course, is gonna be on Monday, so it's a three-day holiday, and it's nice. And if it's in the middle of the week, I'm sure it's not as attractive when it's like a three-day holiday, I understand that. It's just, again, I'm back to the idea of the statement that we made now, about recognition of a holiday that's been long overlooked, and a constituency of people who within the idea of understanding who we are as a community, it might help us to, it might set a statement that says that we recognize holidays that are just as important to people who are African-American as we are, as people are predominantly white. So that, to me, I think that's where I'm kind of coming from. And I appreciate everything you've said, and I could live with that, you know, building up. It's just this year's a three-year holiday, but I know what you're saying, it's, you think it's gonna be set in stone, but I think either way, I think either way.
I think that, I don't have a vote, but I want to share my thought on this, is that first time I ever heard Juneteenth was in the last two years. And July 4th was always my favorite holiday. But I never thought about that from the perspective of a black person who didn't have that same day of freedom, because black people in this country were not free until Juneteenth. Did any of us ever learn that in school? Does anybody remember learning about that in school? No, I don't either. And for me, I think that we do have a historically black community that this is important to them. And I think this is a way for us to say to a historically black community in the town of Elon, that they're important to us. And there are some, you know, I guess, things that are unfair when it comes to any of our holidays, because fire department still has to work, the police department still has to work, public works is often still having to come and work, just like they, you know, do on the weekends for all those departments. But, you know, I think there's ways that we accommodate for that with additional time off and added pay. But I think, like Randy said, it does make a statement. And I think that this is just one way that we can say that we learned over the last two years, and we've learned things that we didn't learn in school, and we've learned that a lot of people can do better. And I think that this is just a small step in doing that. I don't like the idea of a floating holiday, I just see it as another PTO day personally. Not that they don't need more PTO days, I'm just saying that, you know, I do like the idea of not having business as usual on a holiday that means so much, and one that we didn't even know was a thing until the last couple of years. But it's been a thing for a lot of other people for a really long time, and I think that that's why we should consider it.
I think that's really what's said, Madam Mayor, and I totally understand where Monty is coming from as far as making sure that we're fiscally responsible and making sure that we have business running as usual. But I do stand with Randy and yourself with the fact that I think if we just make it a PTO day, it really loses its meaning. It's like having the Fourth of July on the sixth, which is my birthday, so I wouldn't really mind. But, you know, it just takes away some of that, that meaning, and I think this can be something that we can not only show as being proud of our town for doing, stepping up maybe before a lot of other towns do, and also respecting our employees. But what you talked about is the historical cultural of our town, so I do think it's important as well. And I do think that we should have it on the actual day, if it comes up maybe later where the employees feel like it would be more beneficial to them to have as a floating day, we can, as Rich said, that can always be an option. I think at this point, I think if we're gonna do it, we should do it right.
Yeah, I mentioned at the last meeting, and I could go either way, to be perfectly honest with you, because I know, like I said, with my work, it is a floating holiday. But as I mentioned the last meeting, kind of be in step with the committee that we've had set up or setting up, you know, for diversity and making sure that we're on step there. I think this would fit in well with that. And Emily's right, I mean, I knew nothing about that, and I felt like I was fairly well educated, but I had no idea, to be honest with you. So I'm fine with doing it on, you know, having an actual holiday for Juneteenth.
Now, I have a question of inexperience. If Juneteenth falls on a day when we have an Alderman, Board of Alderman meeting, do we not have that meeting on that day? If Christmas fell on a Tuesday or something like that, we don't meet on those days, right? Okay, I'm trying to make sure.
And we set the meeting, so if we wanted to say we're gonna meet on the day after Christmas, we could. I don't think anybody would enjoy that, but.
No, but I heard you.
We just have to post it.
That's a thank you, I did not.
We'll make a motion to approve Juneteenth as a recognized holiday for Elon.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to reports, let me just say, I think that was a great decision for us as a board and for our town.
And big notes or reports, town manager?
Last week, we did acquire the, we have the deed now on the land on West Hager that we purchased, so that deal is done. I reached out, so start that planning process for police station as we move forward. Reached out to Gibsonville on the Travis Creek facility. We've gotten our sign off from USDA, and I know there's a couple of things that they need to address as well. So I sent out, sent them a note to inquire where they are. Hopefully, we'll get that project rolling as well. Emailed you all the month report earlier today, and one thing I'd just like to highlight is, people always tease me about, you know, coming from a place where we get lots of snow and everything. And I have questioned our crew about snow and how we treat it, how we do it, and I'll have our areas of expertise, and there's works. So they did a really good job with the snowstorms we had over the last several weeks. Roads were cleared for nothing but complimentary comparisons to neighboring communities and their roads, and how you could tell when you drove across the town line, it was, people were very impressed. I dealt with one complaint about it's an end of a driveway, and explained that watch, that's where snow goes when you push it, and you'll deal with it a lot, it comes as a shock. When you deal with it three times in one snowstorm, and it happens three times and the plow comes by, you know, that's just, that's an unfortunate fact of life in physics, so. They did a really nice job, and you've got the summary of how many extra hours they put in, I think it was about 180 or something, and went through a fair amount of salt, they've replenished, so it's it's a big effort to do what they did, particularly with the amount and type of equipment we have, because we don't have the dedicated big plow trucks that communities up north have. So to do what they did, they did a really nice job. That's all I got.
Wow, that was quick. Hey. Mark, we'll go to you first, since last week you were so upset that everybody saw your thunder.
You caught me off guard now. Yeah, I want to echo that about, and I mentioned it last time, but really did a really good job. And actually, I have, a couple of my employees came through Elon who don't live here, live in Burlington, and they really pointed that out, which I thought was neat, of course, I know I'm on the board here, but really, really good job there, and I've said it before, but thank you for the month of report. That really, I know it takes a lot of time for you guys to put that together, I understand that, but it's very helpful in our read. So I do appreciate you doing that. That's all I have.
Sweet, Monty?
Yeah, I just echo what Mark shared, I think I found this very helpful, you know, like that you added the code enforcement, I think gives us an idea about, you know, what our staff's seeing, what they're dealing with, and also with the Department. But extra efforts do help a citizen to get here. That's something a lot of folks want to mess with, they just, that's not my job, you know. I'm glad to see we have people who make it their job to look out for our town and our citizens. Appreciate that, same thing with the fire department, I hope we get all our fire trucks back and working. That report was a little discerning, that wasn't the new truck, it was broke down, was it?
No, sir.
Anyway, that was good, and January was a good month.
And so being third does change.
Hey, I'm like mixing it up tonight.
Echo always with the staff, right? I mean, the staff is the heartbeat of this town, and I know it seems sometimes every Alderman meeting, we think the staff and the kind of sounds redundant. But seriously, right, like the staff is what drives our town. And again, you left chief before our turn last time. But I just want to also publicly thank your staff and your team for fixing the flag next door at the veterinary office, right? Like that, that is what our town does, that is what our police force is. And, you know, it's adding to the thing, I read your article in the Elon News about trying to build the community, right? And acts like that builds the community, builds the trust in our police force. Also, I want to congratulate, not congratulate, but I agree with Mayor Sharp said, I think what we just voted on for Juneteenth was a nice step for our town. Appreciate it, I think other people are gonna appreciate it, as a citizen, I appreciate it, right? We're still in Black History Month, so Elon University has been doing a lot of great workshops and showing seminars and a lot of history of Alamance County and the surrounding areas, and the African-American Cultural Arts and History Museum and the BUMA outlets are doing some outreach. outreach for, uh, Black History in Alance County. And then also, I just want to send a heartfelt, um, thanks and prayers to, uh, Ms. Jodeen, she, uh, is part of our Arts Council, um, she's been a very integral part for the Arts Committee. Um, her husband just recently passed away. Um, and, uh, we were going to be doing the yarn bombing, uh, especially Super Bowl Sunday. Um, we, we've postponed that, um, so if you still want to do some yarn and decorate our town, whether there's time for it, we're going to push it to the spring, but, um, I just want, uh, from the town to her, like, I mean, we're definitely thinking of you and praying for, but that's all I have to say.
Sorry to hear that, I knew that he, well, he was ill. Um, Randy?
I just echo, you stole our thunder, Mark. But I just want to echo everything that Mark, uh, shared as well about, about staff and, and, and the good work last month. I did want to share a couple of quick things, uh, first one is, is that Elon, for the first time, will be, um, hosting the area quilt shows that's going to be happening. And I am so glad that it's come to Elon, and I hope that we can work together to make this, I think the first year is going to be slow, but we'll, we'll get there, we're going to keep building on this. Because in some communities, this is really a draw, and it can be, because quilting is a huge work of art. A lot of people don't realize what can go into that, and so my hope is, is that once we get this off the ground, that year after year, we'll, it'll be something that will continue, this will be happening next month. I don't even have the exact dates, I know you all wanted to lift that up. I also wanted to make sure that you all know that, uh, and I, and this is, I'm going to, maybe in experience once again, should have brought this up even last week, maybe even before, but, uh, we could have maybe made a resolution. Um, but, uh, the first, uh, you know that the Boy Scouts of America is now known as BSA, because they have allowed girls to be a part of the BSAs. Just so happens that the first Eagle Scout, female Eagle Scout, uh, received her Court of Honor this, this last weekend. Her name is Ella Davis, and Ella is the first female to get an Eagle Scout in Alance County. Here in Elon, so I just wanted to lift that up and let everybody know, and if we want to, in, in retrospect, do a resolution honoring her, sending her a letter that would, uh, let her know, because she received them from Ted Budd, and she received them from other people, they, the flag flew over uh, the, the State House and that, and I felt like, oh, man, I, I missed an opportunity here. And so I just wanted to make sure that we, we lifted that up. And, and once again, I'm just, uh, thankful for, uh, for coming together at the retreat that's going to come up in a, in a week and a half, and I know we're going to be busy, but, uh, I'm looking forward.
The quilt show is more tonight.
Tonight to the twelfth.
Where is that?
It'll be at the, uh, Elon Community Church in the, in the Community Life Center, and, uh, they're going to, and, and the quilts will be on display for the whole week. And you would come in, they'll be doing, uh, uh, when an auction, there's going to be classes, there's going to be a lot of things going on, and these are quilters that, and they'll be inviting quilters from all around the state and other areas to come. This used to always be held in, in Burlington, and that's, I'm really proud of.
Randy's actually right, I mean, if you're not into quilting, you may not know how big it is, but when I worked for North Carolina PBS, um, I did stories with them, and it is a huge draw for a community, so if we can get something like this to continue, you're exactly right, this is adds revenue to our local businesses, restaurants, um, that sort of thing. I, everybody has said everything I wanted to say, um, but I did want to give a shout out to our amazing planning board. Randy and I both attended that last week, Pam obviously does an amazing job with them, lots of, lots of work to be done, but um, they do, as I said, the heavy lifting, I mean, they go through a lot of information and ask really important questions before they bring it to us, so I want to thank them for all their diligence and hard work that they do, so. To what our staff does as well.
Right, um, Kev, ditto to everything you all said, I'm excited for the, the quilt show. Um, I love quilts, and it's so hard to find, you know, it's kind of a lost art, and, you know, hopefully we'll find some younger people who might get interested in that and, you know, continue that art form that, you know, really could die off, you know, fairly soon, so hopefully we'll really see some more people, you know, taking that up, because I, it's just beautiful. Um, next week, I will be attending the North Carolina Mayors Association event and leading up to the retreat. I think I did meet with, um, the new owners of Elon Oaks Vet, and of course, they were very thankful for their new flag and that experience. And they were just sharing how, you know, they wanted to be an Elon because of the community aspect of it, they wanted to be part of a community, and they didn't feel that they could achieve what they wanted to do in terms of being part of a community elsewhere. And so they fought hard to make sure that that was where they were when they started their business. So, um, I'm sure that they would be happy to meet with any of you and, um, your pets as well, and they see all types of pets, so. They show, if you show up in a, with a bag in your hand, I'm running out, because I know what's inside of the bag. Um, because I don't want any part of that, but they will handle that, they will handle that. Um, and that's, I think that that is it, thank you all for my semi tardiness today. Um, I just didn't get out of the office in Charlotte early enough today to get here. My time to be here. Anything else? Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn? Alright, second? All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned?
Come to the meeting, Jeff.
Oh, you know, having things is good.
I'm good. Not after a German, no, no.